Acknowledging and calling on our Department of Education and Mayor's people that have joined us this evening, we recognize Ms. Naomi Gubernik. There you are. Thank you for being with us, the Chief of Staff for Dr. Thornton. From the Mayor's Office, Deputy Mayor Dawn Kirstetter is here. There you are. Thank you for being here. We have former Commissioner, but always Commissioner, once you are, David Stone, who has joined us this evening. We have Dewanis Duret, who is the tireless Intergovernmental Relations Director for the Baltimore City Public Schools, Sabrina Sutton in the back, always sits in the back of the room, but she's in the front of all issues, education and youth, as far as the City Council and Mayor's Office are concerned. Who have I not acknowledged? I would like to be -- and Dawn, are you not -- okay. Oh. And Ms. Gibson, who is at all of our council meetings, because she is the Mayor's Coordinator for relations with the Baltimore City Council, and has been for years, and we love her and thank her. She keeps things moving for us and for the Mayor. Let me begin then by calling on Allison Perkins Cohen, Executive Director of New Initiatives for the School System. And we'll use this podium, which is, if that's all right with your -- or do you want to just -- oh, are you going to start?
I'll just start briefly.
Okay, this is Dewanis Duret.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Education Youth Committee and other members of the council. As Madam Chair indicated, I'm Dewanis Duret, the Governmental Relations Liaison for the School Board. I first want to say thank you for giving us this opportunity and to let you know that Dr. Thornton and Marnell Cooper, who is Chair of the School Board, they both would be here, but they had longstanding out-of-town commitments on their calendar, but again, otherwise, they would definitely be here. But in their stead, Ms. Naomi Gubernik, Chief of Staff, is here.
Thank you.
And today, we just sort of wanted to focus on the resolution that requested that the School Board reconsider the proposed FY17 charter school funding formula. As many of you know, on September 10th, several charter school operators filed a lawsuit, but it was not on the FY17 proposed funding formula, but on previous funding obligations. And again, on September 22nd, as many of you know, the district agreed to withdraw that FY17 proposed funding formula from consideration, with the understanding that the charter operators would then withdraw their lawsuit so that discussions could occur. Unfortunately, the operators did not withdraw that lawsuit. However, we have honored our commitment to not move forward with the FY17 funding formula. So again, since this matter also is still under pending litigation, it does make matters challenging, but however, we are still here to provide the council with as much information as we can. And with that, Allison Perkins Cohen, with the Madam Chair's permission, can begin.
Thank you. And then after that, I will call on Councilman Henry to speak to the resolution. My fault, I forgot. And then we will proceed with the other speakers.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for having us here today and giving us this opportunity to speak before the City Council. So charter schools, this is a really important issue to us. Charter schools are a really important part of the portfolio. I'm a former charter school operator myself. Baltimore City has 34 charter schools, serving about 14,000 of our 85,000 students. They offer a variety of programs to our students, a variety of programming that families value. City Schools also includes 150 other schools that serve the other 70,000 students, that also offer a range of programs. We've been managing this portfolio over time to really ensure that all of our students have access to high-quality options and a range of high-quality options. We're really committed to our vision of excellence and equity in education for all of our students. For several years, we've been, in this regard, we've been working with charter school operators and other stakeholders to establish a formula for calculating the amount of resources that charters receive that meets, I think, you know, shared goals of being clear and predictable, that it ensures financial sustainability on the part of individual schools in the district, and that is equitable for all of our students. One possible formula for FY17, we developed in response to some of these conversations where we've repeatedly heard from the members of the charter coalition that they would like the model to be a revenue-based model, so we developed a revenue-based model in response to that and presented it at the September 8th Board Meeting. Since then, a number of charter schools, as Dewana mentioned, have filed a lawsuit regarding the FY16 formula, so it's not the same proposal, but regarding the FY16 formula. And in order to find a way forward, Mayor Rawlings-Blake stepped in and offered that Mayor Schmoke would facilitate, you know, discussions between us so that we could try and reach an agreement on a formula for FY17. In response to that proposal, on September 22nd, the district agreed in good faith to withdraw our proposal, in the hopes that, you know, that the -- at the time, our understanding was that the charter schools were withdrawing their litigation, and that that would give us the opportunity to move forward with a conversation, with a facilitated conversation with Mayor Schmoke, so that we could have a public process for discussing the charter funding formula. Our hope was that through the Mayor-Schmoke process, again, that we would have a public way of, in spirit of collaboration, of discussing the possible funding formula. Since then, we've learned that the lawsuits have not been withdrawn. We have still honored our commitment to withdraw the funding formula, and we continue to work with Mayor Schmoke to try to find a way forward to -- so that we can have protective conversations around the funding formula. We remain committed to that, though we also are hopeful that the litigation is dropped. These discussions have implications for all Baltimore City families, and we want them to move forward in a public setting so that all interested parties can learn about the issues.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments, and you're going to be around so if questions arise.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And let me say that we knew before we even scheduled this meeting that Dr. Thornton could not be here. We had a sense of urgency about having the hearing, however, and talked to Dewana and other persons at North Avenue, and determined that Dr. Thornton would be well-represented because we really wanted to move ahead. Once this happened, once the proposal was withdrawn, we still decided to go forward with this hearing so that, just so people could be updated, just as you have done here and others will do. And one person I failed to introduce, or I introduced but failed to give his time to talk about the resolution that he really developed and presented, and we all jumped on board to be of assistance, is Councilman Bill Henry, the Vice Chair of this committee and the leader in this City Council effort. Bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, come on, you guys can do better. Good evening!
Good evening!
Thank you. If you're going to come in here with this big C of orange shirts and be all bright and forthright and brash, let's show a little bit of energy. The -- I want to thank all of you for coming, and for those of you watching at home, I want to thank you for staying home. The -- I also want to thank my colleagues, because as you can see, array to the side of us, we actually have more members of the council who aren't actually on this committee here tonight than we have committee members. It's just one sign of the amount of interest and participation that the entire council has in this issue. And I will say again what I said at Lake Montebello that Saturday morning, which is that all members of the Baltimore City Council cosponsored this resolution. I don't mean to say this in any way that might be taken as disrespectful, but if we all sign on to it, it can't be that controversial. You know, it's --
Woo!
But I also want to say, and I want to thank the school system, because it puts us in actually an odd position of we are here to have public input on a resolution asking the school system to reconsider a funding formula that, very frankly, they have already agreed to reconsider. And so, in a very basic but important way, we already won. You know, we already got what this resolution would have asked for, which is an opportunity to step back and think this through again and see if we can come up with something better. And that's the process that's going on right now. As the council, as the Chair pointed out, Dr. Thornton very much would have wanted to be able to participate in this. He called me personally as the sponsor of the resolution to make it clear that his inability to be here on the night that we chose should not in any way be taken as a lack of respect or support for our process. He also presented, the council has been presented with a statement. It's a little lengthy, so I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I am going to read one paragraph towards the end, which I find instructive. "As we continue to work with former Mayor Schmoke, I remain optimistic about finding common ground with the charter operators so that productive discussions can take place. These discussions have implications for all Baltimore's families, and we want them to move forward in a public setting so that all interested parties can learn about the issues. I will keep you updated on the issue, particularly as we move forward with our budget planning for the 2016 and 2017 year. That work is beginning now, and we will be seeking your input on funding priorities. Our commitment is to develop a budget that supports our vision of excellence and equity in education for every child, and we need the support of all of our school communities to make that vision a reality." I think that that's an admirable sentiment. I applaud Dr. Thornton for taking that position, and I'm not going to speak for all of you, because some of you are going to get up and speak quite well for yourselves, thank you. But I'd like to think that all of us in that room, all of us in this room, share that feeling. We're all here because we all care about all kids at all schools. We, I mean, that's it. If we didn't care about all kids in all public schools, we could be doing something else with our kids. We could be putting our kids in private school. We could be moving out of the city and going to another system entirely. If we are here, it's because we care. And I want to thank all of you for coming out and showing that to me.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilman, and thank you for your leadership on this issue. We have four people on a panel that will lead off our testimony this evening, and I will call them in order, after which we will go to our signing sheets. They've also signed in, and start calling those people who indicated they wish to testify. So our first person is Sharika Chaney. Are you here? Have I said it? Ah, here she is.
Good evening, council members. My name is actually Sherrell Savage. I'm pinching for Ms. Chaney tonight.
Okay.
I would like to share that I am a proud parent of three young men who attend Kip Harmony and Kip Ujima Village Academy. I am passionately invested in all of my students' education and their future, as are all the parents who are here tonight. As a leader at Kip for the past five years, I've had many opportunities to grow. Our school leaders value parent voice, and they've taught me that my voice matters and that I have power. The power that makes change, positive change. All of the families here tonight recently raised their voices, asking that a proposed funding formula that could have jeopardized our students and their futures and their schools be stopped. You heard our voices, and we are here today to say thank you. We want to share our gratitude -- We want to share our gratitude with each of you, on behalf of all the parents and students from all the public charters around the city, for working with Dr. Thornton and his staff to pull the proposed charter funding formula. Thank you for encouraging everyone to come to the table to find a funding solution that will benefit all students. Again, thank you for hearing our voices and helping us to keep our choices in our students' education. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kate Prim.
A little shorter here.
I know, it's not --
Try to get us moving ahead, get the PowerPoint up to where we are. See if I can figure that out.
Oh, I see.
Here we go.
Oh, wow.
So here we are. Thank you. Thank you to the City Council for unanimously supporting Councilman Bill Henry's resolution to equitably fund Baltimore City Public Charter Schools. Exclamation point. Thank you. Thank you, Bill Henry.
Ah.
Thank you, Mary Pat Clark. Caught both of you there.
The camera.
Thank you, Ricky Spector.
Ah.
Thank you, Jim Kraft. And thank you, Brandon Scott. So as you said earlier, together we worked to defeat the school system's proposal to defund charter schools in Baltimore City. Tonight, we're going to give the council an update on where things stand right now.
Oh, this is, yeah, this is --
We have made some progress, but there is still so much to do. Our team is here to inform you, to listen, and to learn, and we thank you again for this opportunity. So as I was introduced, I'm Kate Prim, the founding principal of the Green School of Baltimore, and I want to share with you some information about where things are right So debating with the school system about charter school funding has been happening for a long time now. The latest proposal by the school system on September 8th was bad, but it was by no means the beginning of the debate. A year ago, the school system put forward a funding formula for charter schools that completely abandoned the state law. Charter school leaders in Baltimore have been seeking information about funding for charter schools and for all schools in Baltimore City since 2012. Charter school operators filed a complaint in Baltimore City Circuit Court on September 10th to find answers to questions they've been unable to resolve after years of working with the school system. The decision to go to court was not made quickly and was not taken lightly. As of today, nine operators are involved in the suit, representing 15 different schools. Those schools involved in the suit are Afia Public Charter School, Baltimore Montessori Public Charter School, Baltimore Montessori Public Charter Middle School, Brem's Lane Elementary, recently approved as an Afia Baltimore School, Creative City Public Charter School, Patterson Park Public Charter School, City Neighbors Charter School, City Neighbors Hamilton, City Neighbors High School, the Empowerment Academy, Kip Ujima Village Academy, Kip Harmony Academy, Southwest Baltimore Public Charter School, the Green School of Baltimore, and Tunbridge Public Charter School. Fifteen schools. To be clear, these schools have not dropped their lawsuits, nor do they plan to. Each of these schools is deeply committed to seeking a mediated resolution to this debate. And to this end, we are deeply, we are extremely happy that the former Mayor Kirk Schmoke has agreed to meet with representatives for our group and from the school system to seek resolution. We are grateful to Mayor Stephanie Rawlings-Blake for providing leadership on this issue. And we, as a group, are committed to participating in good faith for as long as it takes to find a solution that aligns with the law and is fair for all public school students in Baltimore City, all public school students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Danique Dali, Principal of City Neighbors High School.
Yeah. Never used one of these. Does it work?
There you are.
All right. First of all, how are you? How's everybody doing? Thank you for being here this time of evening, and especially the students back there, been there since about 8 o'clock. I see you, I'm talking to you. So I'm glad someone said, you said that, we're here because we care, and we are. We're here because we care, and we also want things to be fair. So that's really what this is about, and there are some things that we're just seeking. It's simple. We want transparency. We want the books to be open. We want to know what are behind the numbers. What's the details? We want a level of efficiency. We feel that efficiency from the central office would help us in the classroom when it comes to money for funds for all schools. And also, we feel it's important for the, and it was said before, the school system to follow the law. That helps guide our work. And also, we want to agree on the mediation. So that's something that we feel is important, and those things together would equal us working together and going in the right direction forward. I'm going to go back to what I was talking about when it comes to opening up the books and what that really means to us. I'm a principal, so I'm a principal, I have to speak to parents all the time, and actually, I'm advised to speak to parents one time a year about the budget. Parents, right? But I don't, I don't, every year, the numbers are different, and it's hard to follow, and so I know something, but I don't understand it. And so this is an example, each, every year, the school system allocates money, and this time, this one example is around specialized transportation. If you notice, in this, and I'll just, for those who can't see it, 2010, it was $17 million. 2013, $49 million. 2014, back to 30, down to 31. And then 2015, the projection, and the money is $45 million, all towards this, which includes $5 million spent on taxis, according to news reports. So our question is, you know, why are the changes so drastic and dramatic? Because that's what I get. Why is this happening? I don't know. And that's what I have to tell parents, all right? So that we feel that is important, but if the books were open, I can explain something a little bit better. We also feel that things related to our school system receiving, or I should say, the school system started 2015 with a surprising and poorly explained $108 million budget deficit. Even though $27 million in the budget was restored according to Baltimore City, the per pupil was not increased. Once again, I can't explain that to any parents. If the books were open, maybe I can explain something a little bit better. The school system spends more money per pupil on central office costs than any other district in Maryland. All right? Once again, more money for the district, less money for the students, because the per pupil went down. So I have to explain that once again to parents. If the books were open, maybe I could explain that a little bit better. So these things we feel are important. Another one I just want to discuss is, the school system has said that more cash would be pushed to the schools, but it would take a lot of work. All right. It's a lot of work for all of us. Well, when can we do that work? And also, you know, things like last year, the school system spent, added $33 million for all schools in new expenses that were centrally controlled, and that really boils down to about 400 per student. Now, I'll go to the next slide so you can see that. 400 per student for every student. All right? Once again, we just want to understand it, because if I had to speak to parents, that is part of my job. Right now, I cannot, they don't understand it, and neither do I. So more transparency would help in this effort, all right? No principal in Baltimore City or anywhere should receive numbers every year that they have to explain, all right? And every year, I get a number that I have to explain that to parents, that is, in a conversation, every year, that is not an honest conversation, because I can't explain everything. So if the books were open, if we had more transparency, maybe I can get the parents to better understand what we're trying to do. This is something that every principal has to do. All right? So we just want you to understand that, and more importantly, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. I should have said before, but let me say now, if any of the colleagues here have a question, please let me know. Oh. We have been joined by the President of the City Council, Bernard Jack Young. Welcome, Mr. President. Yeah. Do you want to say anything? Next, we have Will McKenna, Chair of MAPCS, and he is Executive Director of Afia Baltimore Incorporated.
Good evening, and thank you for having us tonight. I want to talk for a few minutes about the things that we, as a charter organization, as charters around the city, and certainly as the litigants are looking for. The specific question is, what do we want? The first thing that we are after is a mediated process that leads to a long-term solution. As was earlier alluded to, we've been debating this for a very long time, really since the law began in 2003, and intensely over the last four years, and there seems to be no end in sight. And so we are here to fight for a solution right now, and that is enduring and long-lasting. We think mediation is critically important to that. Why? Because we believe the school district is not inclined to follow the law because it doesn't believe in the law. That is the essence of the debate. We see that even today, as the CEO put out a letter to families across the city. And even though the last funding formula was dropped, the CEO is still making the argument that there were elements of that funding formula that should be followed, elements, quite frankly, that we know are blatantly against the law. We also see that they're not committed to true discussion, because at this point, the CEO is still not being completely honest about what happened on the 22nd, and I need people, the public and the City Council, to know that. We even heard earlier tonight, people referencing the fact that the school system was led to believe that charter school operators were dropping the litigation. The question is, who led them to believe that? Certainly, none of the litigants ever did that. We're not doing that tonight. We never did that on the 22nd, and we never did that afterwards. And so to suggest that the school system was led to believe that we were going to drop the suit, and therefore the school system dropped its funding formula, and somehow because they dropped their funding formula and we didn't drop the suit, we are being disingenuous, I can tell you very honestly that it feels dishonest to have to hear that. And it feels very difficult and challenging for us to begin to have either facilitated discussions, conversations, or make steps towards mediation when on these core issues we have disagreements.
Woo! [applause]
We know that the district is not committed to the law, because when you look at revenue since 2009 to the school district, and you look at where revenue, the per pupil for charter schools is, you can see that revenue has gone up 11.3% to the district, and at charter schools, it's 4.7%. That tells us that the school district is not committed to the funding formula. Now, I am going to, albeit quickly, try to talk through just a few minutes about what the law says and how it's supposed to work. And here's what we know. The school system has a budget of roughly, well, it's $1.339 million, or $1.3 billion, sorry. And all this data is taken from the 1516 operating budget of the school system. So it's basically a budget of $1.4 billion. That amounts to $15,753 for all students That amounts to $15,753 for all students in Baltimore City. The way that charter school funding works is there's a formula, and there's a line, and you talk about things that are above the line, and things that are below the line. That's how, I've been doing this since 2003, and that's how we talk about it. There are 85,000 students in Baltimore City, there are around 5,000 pre-K students. Generally, historically, with respect to the funding formula, we've taken the pre-K children out. And so, you'll see that alluded to here. I want to start by talking about above the line. There are certain things that are above the line that we agree with, and have agreed with. Loudly, and sometimes not very clearly, it seems the school system doesn't always agree with what we're saying. We agree about debt service and adult education. We agree with retiree health, and we agree with out-of-public placements. We agree that specialized transportation. All of those things, as the note says, are things, that their costs for all students and charter schools should share the burden of those expenses. We do say, however, and we have said for years, these things need to be run more efficiently. Specialized transportation is a specific example of that. And when we talk about fighting for all students, it is lines like that. Charter schools feel it directly because it's in our funding formula, but all students in Baltimore City are affected by mismanagement of something like specialized transportation. And it's no small amount of money. There are things above the line that we disagree with. There are lines that the school system puts in the funding formula that are contrary to the law. The law, incidentally, which was upheld in 2007 by Judge Bell in the State Court of Appeals. Fund balance, there's a line, it gets a little tricky to say this 10 times fast, but other, other revenue. Title I, food services, special education, English language learners, pre-kindergarten. We strongly believe that the fund balance and other revenue categories should not be excluded from per pupil calculations from charter schools. They are now. The remaining items should be distributed as per pupil based on student eligibility. That's what the law discusses. We agree with that. It's not what we do now. Those are centralized now. Centralized means centralized management. When things are managed centrally, we have to deal with, really, terrible inefficiencies. And that affects the bottom line, the amount of money we ultimately get. Now, it is true, and I would, a bit of a caveat here, the school system is talking about the money should follow the child. And that is an important, it's an essential point in charter funding, and really, for Dr. Alonzo, it was an essential point, fair student funding, the money follow the child. The fundamental problem that we had with the last proposal, not to get too far deeply into it, because I know it's dropped, and yet, Dr. Thornton keeps bringing it up, what the school district did is they took money that indeed came to Baltimore City based on its poverty level. But it was not restricted money, and it's never been restricted money. And the school system has always been allowed, as every other jurisdiction in the state of Maryland, has been allowed to use that money and distribute that money across the system, without just focusing on either high poverty or English language learners. So it was a complete misrepresentation of what the state law says about how to distribute those funds. And that is why, one of the many reasons why we had such a vociferous reaction to that last funding formula. We know, once you take out what's above the line, you are left with $765 million. It's a critical piece to understand. Critical piece for the council to understand, it's a critical piece for all people, all families and students across the city to understand. We all start with $9,600. Every child, traditional, public, student alike, $9,600 per child is where we are because of those, after you take out the above-the-line expenses. What that means, then, is that traditional school, or funds available to traditional school students is $647, $40 million. For charter school students, it's $125 million. It's 13,000 students. You hear Ms. Perkins Cohen mention 14,000, 13,000, the pre-K is an issue there in terms of a discrepancy, and we are doing some rounding here. Now, this is where things get very interesting. What happens, and I'll start on the right side, for charter schools, by law, upheld in 2007 by the State Court of Appeals, in the funding formula that the State Board of Education put forward, charter schools have 2% taken out. It's about $2.5 million. That's what the law says, that's what we do. The school system repeatedly wants more than that, and we dispute that, but that's what the law says. The charter schools are then left with a per pupil, it's around $9,400, give or take. With that money, the charter schools must then run everything. It doesn't matter if it's professional development, it doesn't matter if it's facilities, it doesn't matter if it's bus tickets for kids, it does not matter if it's, you have your teachers, of course. That is the money that the charter school operator has to run an independent program that's overseen by a governing board, and in many, many cases, done at a very high level. On the left side, here's what happens at the school system level. Again, they start with $9,600. And then, you have centralized or centrally controlled expenses. So out of that $9,600, $2,700 per student comes out. It's $177 million. Those funds are controlled by central office. I'm not here to suggest that there needs to be no central office. But that's your various, we've called them networks in the past, that's your human resources or HC, this is the district offices. Another $76 million comes out for funds controlled by central office but spent at the school. Things like the principal's salary, facilities, bus tickets. So they're controlled and managed at central office, but they're basically school-based expenses. So you take out all of that, and the traditional schools then are left with a per pupil of $5,800. But it's critical that people understand that we both start with $9,600. We both do. And it's also critical to understand why we talk all the time about why efficiencies are important, because if you don't have efficiencies in those big lines of $177 million and $76 million, it's a direct hit to traditional schools. And I know this well, because I was a traditional school principal for five years. Charter school leaders have, for 11 years now, been willing to discuss all aspects of the district's implementation of the formula. Again, I know this personally, I was at the table for years and years and years, working hard. They're good people at the school system, and they've been there for years and years and years. These are challenging issues, and that's why we think we need mediation. The school system really is reluctant to participate in mediation because the school system is reluctant to follow the law because the school system doesn't like the law. That's the bottom line. The charter operators can't accept this any longer. You can't have a conversation about how to apply the law when the other side doesn't believe in the law. Ultimately, there's too much at stake here for all public school children in Baltimore City. All children. And I hope, in what we've heard this evening, and I know Ms. Richardson is going to come back and conclude with a few statements, but it's not just the platitude that this is about all kids. It's simply not just the platitude. If you look at $33 million that was added to the budget last year, and it's centralized, that's $400 for every child in the city of Baltimore. And we have to know why that money was allocated, and why we're centralizing money instead of pushing it out like we used to in fairer student funding. When we're talking about specialized transportation, we need to know why it's costing us $49 million, and why we're running cabs around the city. There are multiple issues. We invest so much money in human capital, we can't keep an HC specialist or a head of HC for more than two years. All students are ultimately affected by what happens. We're here as charter school leaders tonight and supporters, but we're also here supporting all Baltimore City students. Thank you very much.
McKenna, we have a question from Councilman Mosby, please. In other words, thanks for coming back.
Oh, I was almost out of here.
Hey, Will, could you slide back to the second slide you presented? The one that showed the direct comparison of general revenue versus charter per pupil? Yeah, that one.
Oh, that one?
Yeah, just curious. In the comparison, why was the decision, or maybe I don't know the definition of general revenue, but why isn't there a comparison of the charter per pupil increase to the traditional public per pupil increase? Isn't that, don't they correlate a little better?
I would say that they, Dr. Alonzo often wanted to make a correlation because he implemented fairer student funding, and the school district often has said they wanted to do an apples-to-apples comparison. But the honest truth is that because, because you go here, you can't make a direct comparison. All of those services in central office take away from the per pupil that traditional schools ultimately get. And so, therefore, it's hard to make a direct comparison between those traditional schools and what they're receiving, and to charter schools. It's just, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison.
I understand that, but when you look at it from an increased perspective, so you're saying like, general revenue has increased by 11.3%, and charter per pupil has increased by 4.7%. I think there's a good and holistic number to look at the equation to know what the increase has been from a traditional public perspective. And I say that because, you know, your theory could be right, as it relates to some of the add-ons that aren't really factored into that equation. However, I think when you just look at the mindset of the school system, as it relates to leveraging more money and increasing more money per pupil, I think the direct correlation between the charter per pupil and the traditional public per pupil kind of adds some value to the discussion as well.
You certainly can see what the, you can look over time and see what has happened to the per pupil for traditional schools.
Do you think it's closer to the 4.7% or closer to the 11.3%?
I would say that I, well, I would say I don't know, sitting right here. I would also say, you know, what's been so informative, I think, for charter leaders and for people around the city, is here's what we know too often happens. The state of Maryland, there was a cut in funding of $35 million last year. We got $27 million back of that, but no money went back to traditional schools. The per pupil actually, it never increased in traditional schools or charter schools. So, I take your point, and I feel like we can provide that data.
I just think it's interesting, because when you look at it, it seems like we're missing that one line in the map.
I agree.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yeah, just to follow up on my colleague's point, I would encourage you to do that calculation, because I think it, if I'm, if I'm understanding this properly, there's two main, there's three possibilities you'll find out. Either you'll find out that during that same period, traditional per pupil went, either went down compared to charters, was the same as charters, or went up compared to charters. If it went down while charters stayed roughly the same and total revenue went up, then you know that central administration and the services that they pay for must have increased dramatically. If traditional schools went up during the same time that charters essentially stayed flat, then we know that some schools benefited from the increase in revenue at the expense of others. And whichever one that is, that is a very important point to bring to this conversation. I agree that that's a data point that I think would be helpful to the conversation. And I'm looking at one of your numbers crunchers.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm not the numbers cruncher, but I would tell you, that kind of analysis would take a real, serious commitment from both sides to get the data you need and to understand it, because there are a lot of things in schools, traditional schools, that don't show up in a per pupil programming and stuff like that, that comes centrally controlled. So you'd have to tease that out.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Thank you.
Done? All right, thank you.
And we have, I'm sorry, I had not called her. Before, we all know her well, and appreciate her being here. Where are we? Jeanette Richardson, President of AFI of Baltimore Incorporated, and Executive Director of Belair Edison Neighborhoods Incorporated.
Good evening, everyone. So I've been tasked to talk about what we are willing to do. Let's be clear, charter school leaders will do whatever it takes to get a more transparent, more efficient school system. We will rally, we will go to school board meetings, we will come to council meetings, we will do whatever it takes to hold the school system and its CEO responsible for creating better schools for all students in Baltimore City. We want more money and direct funding to schools squeezed out of central office, and we will fight for that. We will advocate strongly to grow the pie for public schools. Councilman Henry spoke about this at the rally on September 26. We need more funding from the state, that's just point blank. But we believe strongly that if our school system is more efficient with the pie that we already have, better leadership, more transparency, then Annapolis will have no choice but to listen to our activism and feel our passion. There's no question that this has started a charter movement. But it's more than that. This is a Baltimore City movement. We're very happy that the City Council has supported us thus far. We're very thankful that the mayor has intervened in the dispute between charter schools and the school system. We are grateful for the former mayor, Schmoke, who is leading conversations that we hope will lead to mediation. All of this is very important work, but it's just the beginning of what lies ahead. Just the start of seeking better educational options and choices for all students in this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Scott has a question. I think it's directed to the school system.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, just really quickly, because we keep hearing about the issue about the lawsuit and the school system believing that it was going to be pulled. Can we, someone, talk about how that the system had the inclination that it was going to be pulled away if the charters are adamantly saying that that was never an option for them?
I hear, no, I hear, I want to be clear, because I know that there's oftentimes a reticence to talk about issues that are involved in litigation. But I just want to be clear that my colleague is not asking for questions about the details of the legislation. The statement was made publicly that the system understood or expected the charters to drop their lawsuit. And so, if I'm understanding right, Councilman Scott is asking, why did the system think that? Which would not be an issue that would be covered by litigation. Why did you think that the charters were going to drop the suit?
It was communicated to us that there was a belief that the charter schools were going to...
That's actually what I was going to ask. How was it communicated?
I know, I'm not sure that we need to go there, Councilman, really. All right, so, I have no idea. Hey, everybody, please. Respect.
I'm just trying to get the answer, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, yes. Councilman, can we go on? Councilman, can we go on to someone else's question? We'll come back to the answer.
Oh, yeah, we can come back.
Okay. Councilwoman Spector, and then we'll get back to Councilman Scott.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I don't know if, who can answer this, but if there has been a agreement to mediate, is the mediation binding? Now that mediation has been put into place, is that binding?
It's a, the facilitation is not binding, but it's something that we are moving with Kurt Schmoke with to try and find a resolution.
I understand resolution and I understand the problem. I don't understand the answer.
Facilitation is not binding. The facilitation is not binding.
I just, I was, I'm under the impression that there has to be an answer. We know the problem. If mediation is an outlet, an, an opportunity, and if it, if it isn't binding, what does it accomplish in resolving the problem? It's not binding, what good is it?
We're still working out the parameters of an agreement, but the facilitation is not binding. That is, the discussion is that there was a facilitation. We would like to have a public process so that we can have the information out in the public, but it's not a binding process.
But that doesn't answer, that doesn't solve the problem. I understand, it just gets to me to get.
Our hope is that it does solve the problem.
Pardon me?
Our hope is that it will solve the problem, that going through a public process, a public facilitated process, that it will resolve the problem.
What I'm concerned about, and I, and I mean this sincerely, we don't want this to go in bigger concentric circles. We really want to solve this problem, and it is a money problem. And so that's what I, I, I don't know. I understand arbitration. I didn't, I wasn't clear on what mediation would produce. And so it's just a matter of everybody still talking.
So our, I mean, it is our hope that this would resolve the process as well. There would be a public process that where we could go through the funding formula, through each item of the funding formula, how it's calculated, why we calculate it that way, why we treat it that way, and we could come to a resolution, that is our hope for the process. And that would result in a.
Hopefully, hopefully that happens. Does it then go to the board to be voted on, to be resolved?
The board is the one who ultimately makes a decision on.
The board has to accept it.
That's right.
I just didn't understand the process. But at least we are talking, and the board ultimately has to approve of what comes out of the mediation process.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Do we have a response on, for Councilman Scott?
Well, from what, what I'm told, that we had a intermediary. I'm not sure exactly who the intermediary was between the school system and the charter, charter representatives. And we were informed that there was an understanding that the charters would drop the lawsuit.
So there, may I?
Yes.
So the, Mr. Redd, so there was no direct communication with each organization that was listed? It was just from the intermediary to all of them?
Intermediary that informed us of this, yes. That was working with both.
It's not true. Thanks.
They want you to repeat, they couldn't hear you, the microphone.
It was an intermediary that was working with both the charter representatives and the school system, communicating with both.
So did, did you guys keep a list of which schools, which agree, which people on the list agreed to taking a lawsuit away? Was there any communication about that, or was just an assumption overall?
I believe at the time, there was a, the initial group that was in the lawsuit were the participants in the discussions. So it was the initial, I think it was eight? Five, five, there were six operators at that time. So we were working with those, they were working with those six operators.
If I could just, if I could just ask and if this could be conveyed back to Dr. Thornton, I think to close off this particular topic for once and for all, if we can just have an understanding that nobody's going to say that anymore? Just, just if, if we could just, we're going to just, if, I'm asking, and I, I'm asking to take that back to Dr. Thornton as a request, could we please just drop that point from future public conversation? If, I don't need it, I don't.
No, I'm saying the point that there was an understanding.
The assertion, and I'm making it clear, the assertion that some unnamed party said this. That's, that's, if you could just ask Dr. Thornton, could we please drop that from future public dialogue? That's, that's, that's a request. And then the other thing, I just wanted, as a, as a sort of a general announcement, because we're going through the sign-in sheets, and we've got pages and pages of people signed up. And many people checked off that they support the resolution, but very few people checked that they wanted to actually testify. And I just want to be clear that if, that people realize there's a little column on this form that you're supposed to check. So if you did not realize that after the chair goes through the people who are signed in.
Yeah, we have an hour before we have to end. So I'm going to go through the people that checked off, and I'm going to call them. And then if there are people who meant to testify but didn't check off, we've resigned, redesigned this sheet a thousand times trying to make sure people saw the testify line. We've never really been successful, sorry. Okay, everybody. We're going to testify, and I understand how emotions are high and it's a very touchy time because it's survival issue here in many, many respects. Survival for children and it's all the children, because all the children are affected by how this plays out. We're, all the children in this school system are on fair student funding if they're not on charter fair school, fair student funding. That's the way the funding is. And so these discussions affect all of our children and should because basically, when fair student funding was initiated, which was not that long ago, the idea was to get the money to follow the children that it's intended for and to leave as little behind as possible to operate the central core of the school system. So, that's, so let's all be at peace, namaste, as we talk about mediation, which we hope will lead to success. And that success will, will also extend to all the children in all the traditional schools. Because it's, it's got to, because it affects the same issues that go into fair student funding. So, all right. Signed in, who have not spoken, is, the first person I have is Jason Lee. Jason Lee, are you here? Jason Lee of Kentucky Avenue?
I'm here, but I'm actually, I actually didn't really technically mean to testify, but.
What was that?
So is this for testimony?
Yeah, you don't have to if you don't want to, but you signed up. What have I done? Oh, you didn't. What am I looking?
That was four?
But.
But I'm here.
You're here.
So. I, I will give you a few minutes. I am the proud parent of two children from City Neighbors Hamilton Elementary and middle school now. Have been a proud, proud person, graduated from Baltimore City Public Schools, went to Poly. Went to 102, which is no longer here, elementary school right down next to Dunbar, down on Central Avenue. My mother, 35 years in Baltimore City Public Schools, have a really good love for Baltimore City education. That's why my kids are here, that's why my wife and I are still, still here, so. My parents took me to Woodlawn for three years, but.
You recovered.
Quickly moved back to Charles Village, and my parents are still in, still in Charles Village, right on Kentucky, I mean Guilford and 25th Street.
And they've got the circulator.
They have the circ, and they're right on the bike strip, so thank you for the bike.
Oh, yeah, they're bikes.
But, but just wanted to say, member of the board at, at City Neighbors, didn't really know much about charter education, was looking at sending my kids to either a private school or parochial school, got into City Neighbors, got in to figure out what the charter program was all about. I think it's a great thing for the city. I think it's a great thing for middle-class families like us who want to stay here, don't want to spend 20 grand to send my kids to one of the other schools. So please, hopefully, you guys can work with the, the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so, wow. Gee. Oh, here's one.
A lot of people support the resolution.
Yeah, I'm not sure. This is, something's wrong here.
Which, which actually is a good thing, because a lot of people don't bother to check that line either when they come to the intermediary.
We don't see a lot of fours. Four, four, four.
Usually people come to check that they're against what we're trying to do.
Okay, this is ridiculous. I know this is wrong. Nobody saw these lines. Wait a minute. Oh, Ms. Je, yeah, Ms. Jeanette already spoke. Kim Truheart. And then, no, that's it. She is the, she's the last, Kim Truheart is the last person signed up, so. We have, so once she has spoken. No, 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 no. No, 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 Kim.
Madam Chair, don't give her a half hour.
We are now going into timing. Kim, you're in your two minutes. We all, Kim is a regular and we love her, and she's very well-informed on many issues, but closest to her heart.
Is our children.
Is the kids.
That's right. Thank you for this hearing. I think what I have, have heard this evening is that there are two aspects of this conversation that I agree with the folks in Orange John. And that is, thank you. That is greater transparency and equity for every child. Now, we got to get there. Now, whether a lawsuit is the way to get there is the question that I'm having. And I thought that was the question that the mayor wanted to address when she intervened. We need to have the conversation about transparency and equity, but not in a courtroom. And that the school system ought to step up and make the budgeting process more transparent and more equitable. Now, how do we get there? Okay, now, if we got to all go to court, then maybe we all need to go to court. And if we got the wrong CEO who's heading the system, who's not willing to open the books, then we need to get a new CEO. Y'all are going to hate me in a minute. I heard a young lady from the school system talk about, let's have a dialogue about the numbers. Let's open the books up. I thought I heard that from the school board or the school system representative, and that we're going to have an inclusive, open, and transparent conversation. When is the question? Because it's long overdue. You know, one of the concerns that I have is that we throw these numbers up on slides and we only paint half the picture. The other half of the picture is that a neighborhood school, and I don't like that word, "traditional", a neighborhood school in Baltimore City that I'm closely attached to.
You can say its name.
Liberty Elementary. In our budget, that's right, it's in the 6th District. Used to be in the 5th District. And the alum in the 5th District is a very good supporter, as well as the 6th District. But the budget for Liberty was $7,100 a child. That didn't come up in this little conversation about equity. You know, I, I appreciate that there are some educational advocates and innovators in this room who are doing great things for children. But I think that this has to be a very fundamental conversation. I think there needs to be two formulas that are developed. One formula is how much money goes to a school, and I don't care what kind of school it is. What is that amount of money that goes to the school to educate that child? Period. Then there needs to be another formula for those operators of schools who have other expenses. And you do not need the mix of the two because that's where it gets real fuzzy. Okay? And from the perspective of neighborhood schools, we believe that the funding formula, that is the topic of this hearing, was not equitable, was not in the best interest of all children. Okay? So I agree, throw it out, let's start over. But we have to have fair conversations where everybody is involved. You know, one of the concerns that I have is that there's a chart that they showed that said 85,000 children in this system are enrolled. Next to that, it said the charter population was about 13% of the 85,000. Thirteen. 13,000, you're right, I'm sorry, I'm getting confused. But the point that, that, that troubles me about the number is that 86% of our children are eligible for free and reduced lunch. So that means 14% don't need help. That's it, that's the same percentage of students who are enrolled in charters.
That's not fair.
Don't, you, you didn't critique anything he said. Why you going to sit there and start critiquing me?
You're right.
So 14% of the students in Baltimore City attend charters. 14% don't need, don't need nutritional help and assistance in this city. Coincidental, probably. But it's a number that we need to look at. And who are we serving? The other, you know, Councilwoman, we, we don't agree on a lot.
I know that, but, but, but first of all, what you're saying is, is not, it's just misleading.
He's throwing out there. And you're not debating his numbers.
I'm sorry, it was just, it was just too blatant, I mean.
Yeah, it's too black for you, I got you.
No, blatant.
All right, the other thing is, the other thing that I think I need to talk about, okay, in reality, is if we're going to educate the children in Baltimore City, then somebody needs to make sure the adequacy of the funding is in place. The adequacy of the funding. And it is absolutely inadequate now. And I don't care whether you're in a charter school or a neighborhood school. It's inadequate. And you, Council members, need to propose some legislation for Annapolis to ensure that we have adequate funding for our children, all of them.
Thank you.
I'm not done yet. Now, we can talk about equity in schools, and this is a function of leadership. And without great leaders in our schools who care about our children, the outcomes will suck. And so this school system needs to develop a great leadership development program. And they need to come to you folks and tell you about this great program that they're going to develop. Because every school deserves great teachers. Every school, every child ought to go into a classroom and that teacher is there because they love them. And if they're not, they need to leave town. And as far as I'm concerned, this conversation has to start at the grassroots level about budgeting and what's fair and equitable in this city. And right now, what's on the table is so inequitable that it sucks.
Thank you. So I have people who may think they have signed up to speak, but didn't. If you wish to speak, would you raise your hand so I can see how many people there are? Come forward, please, and speak to us. What? Yes. Oh, yeah. Come on up, and the president is going to make a statement.
Yeah, because, um...
But no, come up while he does.
I have a meeting that I have to run off to, but I think the biggest issue facing us in Baltimore City is that we really don't have control over our schools, and y'all should advocate for us to have control of our schools. That's number one. We need to get our schools back, just like Prince George County got control of their schools. We need to get our schools back. Grassroots need to be working with us to get our schools back, then you can hold us accountable for what's happening in our school system. Until you do that, they don't have to listen to anything we say. And that's a fact.
Yes, it's a fact. 1997, that's when the, when the school system stopped being basically an agency of city government, where the mayor and city council appointed the commissioners. It was before this current era, and so since then, basically, the Baltimore City mayor and city council have a lot less influence than we did when it was a city agency and a city budget. Good evening. We don't...
We don't, we don't confirm the school board...
No.
We don't hire the CEO, we have no role at all in any of it.
Just what he was talking about. Yes, ma'am?
Sure, hello.
Hi. What's your name?
My name is Sierra, and my daughter is a fourth grader. She attends Patterson Park Public Charter School. And I actually didn't come here today prepared to speak at all, but I felt compelled to speak, so I'm happy...
Thank you.
That you brought that up, about the check on the sheet. I'm not here to preach, I don't know anything about the budget and the numbers and anything like that, so, but I do want to ask for your ears, and I do want you to listen to what I have to say. Why I choose charter school? Well, the main reason why I chose charter school for my daughter, again, who attends Patterson Park Public Charter School, she's now a fourth grader, she's been there since kindergarten, honor roll student, might I add. But the reason why I chose Patterson Park Public Charter School, charter school in general, I was looking for charter schools, is because of the cultural diversity, is one of the number, number one reason why I chose that. I was attracted, not only to the ethnic diversity, but I was also attracted to the diversity in the educational approach to the student. That was a main attraction. The community involvement, how it benefits not only the student development, but also how it benefits the neighborhood development. The school is a very, very essential part of the neighborhood. And the care, the care that the instructors take to the students, how involved and how emotional the teachers are when it comes to the students, and how vested they are. So that was very important. That's why I chose charter school. So, again, I don't know all about the budget and the numbers and the crunching and all that, but...
Don't worry about it, you know about children.
Yeah, I'm here to talk about, and you know, and it comes down to, it takes a village to raise a child, that proverb, and we're all here because we care, so, and my daughter, she would like to say something. We're going to ask for your ears.
Just pull the microphone, pull the microphone out. Pull it out and just hand it to her.
They're demanding, they want to hear you.
Yeah, come on, step in front of the, yeah, hi sweetheart.
Hello, my name is Ava. I go to Patterson Park Public Charter School, and I want to say that I think Patterson, I think charter schools should be open, because if they aren't open and they close down charter schools, then there won't be, like, a lot of schools to, for kids to learn and to speak, and, like, to learn how to do math, reading, math, math reading, and just learn at education. That's why I think charter schools should be open.
All right.
Thank you.
She does it all.
Thank you all very much for coming.
I think that was a good last word, frankly, I don't want to try to top it. Thank you all for being here. Ava has closed us out in the right spirit. It's all about Ava and all the other young children. Thank you for being here. Good luck in your negotiations. Please all keep us advised. Thank you.
Please check the area around your seat to make certain that you have everything with you that you brought with you, and then, thank you very much for coming.